A little bit of the history of KRR. Probably four to six months out of the year, I go one day and went to meet with the superintendent of the council group from across the state. And I learned about the KRR program at one of those meetings. And kind of asked the question, why aren't we doing this? So when I came back and started asking that question, we ended up with an opportunity to have three KRR schools. It was a competitive process, so we made that known to all of the schools. And five of our schools chose to submit applications. The KRR people read those applications and said, we'll fund all five. They're that good. And so, so we really appreciate the work that the schools have put in. And, you know, it's giving our kids some extra structure, extra opportunity, but not in just extending the school day an hour and a half or two days. It's really kind of changing up the pace and trying to make things enjoyable and give some other ways to reinforce and learn. And, you know, this summer program is a huge plus too, so.
And engage the families, is that what you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, really, the work they're doing is phenomenal. And I believe when we, we'll be finishing our third year this year, and we will be taking a deeper kind of look at our data about what we're seeing with this. And I'm excited to see that because I think we're doing the right things. Kids are achieving that wouldn't otherwise be achieving, and we'll be looking at the data to validate that.
I'd just really like to say briefly, like, I really appreciate your enthusiasm. And I know how challenging it must be to do after-school. I do like a little tiny after-school once a month. And especially when you have snow days where there's snow outside, so they can't go outside, they are completely restless. So I imagine another hour and a half to challenge them and to also make it fun and that they learn is really challenging. So, thank you so much for that. That's so awesome. Thank you.
And I've learned how to get a steak dinner, too. So, thank you. Okay. With that, I think we're ready for new business. Item G. Is it Mr. Hogan?
That's me. So Fernando and I have worked up a little tune for you for calendar. And I have Mark on record using a smile the rest of the night. So, Calendar Committee has completed their work, and so I'm going to give you just a brief overview of what the committee has done. And we presented, or I presented some of this information to you in October, so I'll just run through some of this quickly as a refresher. So, makeup of the committee. We have three classified folks that are appointed by the meet confer group. We have nine teachers appointed by the Teachers Association, and those are broken down into three, into each levels. High school, intermediate, and middle school are combined as one group, and then elementary people. We have three building administrators that are appointed by deputy superintendent. We have six parent or community members appointed by the association, and we kind of collaborate that together. Just trying to find community members. And then we have some advisory members. Board members certainly are part of that group. We do invite the Catholic schools. We invite the superintendent from Holcomb, and then a representative from Garen City Community College. Some of the advisory groups, they tend somewhat early on, as we start talking about structure of days, spring break is an example, trying to align some of those things. And so, we gather information from them, and we share information typically in the past anyway, I'm not sure about this year, with Mr. Dr. Myers at Holcomb. But our process starts a little sooner than Holcomb, so Jean used to come by and just kind of figure out what we were doing. And then, another part of the committee is that you serve for a three-year term, and it's staggered. So, each one of those leveled teachers, they'll have a three-year term. At the end of that three years, they go off, we appoint somebody else. And so, part of the idea of that is just so we have consistency within our committee. We're not starting fresh with fifteen, twenty new people every single year. So what do we do? Committee work started in November, so we again, we presented to the board in October, got some direction from the board, and then we went to work in November. That committee work is most of the time face-to-face. We typically schedule every Monday night, we don't have a board meeting until the process is finished. They also have some homework along the way. We get input from staff, certified and classified, and our parent group. And so, they do some homework on their own time analyzing data. There's a large amount of data, we'll get to see the results of our survey. And so then they start kind of going through and categorizing and trying to make sense of that as we move forward to start to build draft calendars. The goals of the committee is to create the best calendar for students. We do have meeting norms as well, and that's a high priority of our meeting norms, is to come with an open mind, to try to present the best calendar for kids. Sometimes, what's good for kids and what's good for adults, I get blended. And so, we want to make sure that that's at the forefront of all of our discussions. So, we also have to meet the parameters in the negotiated agreement. So, in the negotiating, negotiated agreement, it's spelled out that we have to present two calendars. We'll get to the two that we presented later. We want to keep to the same number of hours. Based on a board's charge, we have eleven hundred eighty-three hours in our calendar. Total number of in-service days, workdays, can be no more than ten combined. And then kind of, there's some things that are spelled out in the negotiated agreement of when those things have to take place. Workdays, like the first day back on duty, second semester, before the first day with kids, those kinds of things. And so, we try to meet all those, or need to meet all those parameters. Parent-teacher conferences, the length of that time that's allocated. We also have some other considerations that we get, again, mentioned about the surveys, and try to get as much input as we can, and then try to sort all of that out in a big problem-solving format. So, timing of parent-teacher conferences, we ask for, we ask for input on when parent-teacher conferences should be held, input from spring break. Talked about federal holidays, what should be observed. We get to kind of vote on each one of those. Is it important, very important, not important? Length of winter break, collaboration, collaboration day configuration, in terms of half-day formats. We had some feedback a couple of years ago about collaboration, that people didn't like the half-day with kids and then half-day collaboration. And so, the committee took that input, and then came up with a calendar that we're using now, modeled that, where we have no student contact days, but still get some of those priorities met. So, always a consideration about balancing semesters, starting and ending dates, and then there is a provision for alternative calendar, that the committee, up to committee whether they want to do that or not. And so, we put that out to our committee this year, and we had one participant that was interested, but certainly not a majority of the group. So, we didn't choose that option this year. So, in October, we talked to the board and asked for some direction from the board. What were the priorities of the board as we were going off to do our work? And that, that information that we got is really valuable. Because of some of the parameters with the negotiated agreement, what the board's importance were, we are able to have that upfront, and that can start our conversations as we start building drafts. So, this is again, the reminder from, from the board, and what we put out again, reminded our committee of all that work, that this is the charge of the board, and we sent this out with our survey that went out to our staff as well. So, maintain the current number of contact days. We have one hundred seventy-four and a half contact days. I put in some other data that I got from KASB. State average is one hundred seventy-nine point nine. District with over five thousand, five thousand students is one hundred seventy-three point six. So, we're right in the ballpark on, in terms of contact days. Included collaboration components, and again, not specific. We had an alternative calendar several years ago that talked about like a two-hour early release for collaboration. We have done half-days with student contact, and then now no student contact, but still having collaboration component, so we worked with that. Consider the addition of breaks that may include federal holidays. Again, we used our staff survey to gather that information. And include back-to-back in-service days in September to allow for ABBA training. So if you remember from the ABBA people, we couldn't do that training in the summertime because they, they have their summer groups going on. So for us to utilize them, we had to have it in September for the training, and it couldn't be at the beginning of September because they would be done with their summer program. So for us to have the best shot of getting their trainers here, we had to move it back a couple of weeks in September, and then also have the calendar ready to present to the board tonight. And so, we've done that. So, each one of those things, you'll see in just a second, we'll have two calendars, and you have drafts in front of you, who aren't going to show you, this is too difficult to read. But each one of these components have been met with the calendars that you have been finding. So, Draft B. Draft B is the calendar that received the most votes. And so, going back to the charge of the Calendar Committee, we've met all of the board's charges and have met the requirements of the negotiated agreements. And so, there's a Draft A and a Draft B. There's not a whole lot of differences between the two. Some of the difference is, as an example, our new teacher orientation. So, in the negotiated agreement spells out, new teachers have five additional days to be used for professional development. And so, we've tried over the course of a number of years, different models of doing that. Way back when, we probably had a model that looked similar to this, where all those days were front-loaded for our new employees. Then based on some feedback, things like that that we were getting, we tried something different. And we would take those five days, we would do a few upfront, then we split those into half-day increments, and we'd spread those out throughout the calendar to have some ongoing professional development for those folks. As we were going through the draft, and again, this is just a big puzzle piece, as you shuffle things around and move things around, we ended up back to the front-loading concept of what we're doing with our new staff. But with our PD improvement, doing things a little bit differently, lessed and gids, more application kinds of things, we're going to go back to this and try this model of that front-loading. Another change, you can look, taking on one of the calendars, we had four days upfront, the other one we had five days upfront. We took that fourth day, moved it back later in August, again, just spreading things out. But everything throughout this process is really a give and take. Once you change one thing, there is a domino effect to try to keep all the stars aligned as you go through the process. So, you can look over those two things. This kind of summarizes, this page kind of summarizes what the committee has done. So, start dates, this kind of shows you the similarities and differences. So, start dates are the same, end dates are the same, number of half-day for schools, first and last for both. The number of in-services, four on Draft A, and then four half-days included as well. Three full days on Draft B, and six half-days. So, that's definitely a change. Number of workdays were four. Total number of days first semester were the same, second semester were the same. And then the number of vacation days were different by half a day, and we included that as an in-service day in one and not another. So, looking where it says within parameters, that came from feedback, not the parameters of the board necessarily, but the feedback that you see in this column is information that we gained from our surveys. So, we took that information, like start date, eighty-two percent of the staff and parents prefer a mid-August start date. So, as we gathered that, compiled the information, that's the information we got back, so that's what we tried to put into a draft. So, we were able to meet that based on the feedback we got in both calendars. Winter vacation, same thing, seventy-nine percent wanted a two-week break at winter vacation. So, we were able to do that within both calendars. Easter, seventy-nine percent of our staff were in favor of having both the Friday and the Monday off. And so, in the first draft, Draft A, we just partially made that. We had no school and an in-service on Friday, so it was a complete day off, like we were getting feedback from. But we did have a no-school, non-duty day on the following Monday. But on the Draft B, both days are no-student contact days, and off for staff. Memorial Day, seventy-five percent of our staff and parents were in favor of ending school before Memorial Day. That was a discussion that we had with the board. Could be lengthened that. This is the feedback that we were getting back from people. So again, met those parameters. We did go through every available federal holiday, and again, just went through that kind of ranking system. Easter is big, Labor Day is big, Memorial Day is big. And then, one other one that kind of picked up some steam this year, Veterans Day. So if you took the amount of important and very important and combined those, it was about seventy-five percent. So, we actually added that. So in November, I think it's the eleventh, we had scheduled a collaboration day that day. Typically, we were doing it on Fridays. That was again, feedback that we got from our group. To make that calendar consistent, what we've done in the past is every third Friday is when we do that for help of scheduling, help with our community members to know what our schedule is like. But this case, again, based on feedback that we got, is if there's a holiday close, why not add it to the holiday? And then that way, we're not having it shortened a week. So, we did that in November with Veterans Day. So, kind of killed two birds with one stone. And then last contract day is a little bit unique. An idea came from one of our committee members, kind of towards the end of our process, about the last day of school. So, elementary folks like the last day of school to be half with kids and then half not. High school people don't like that. So, within that group, you're, you've got the yin and the yang of doing that. So, one of the calendars has a workday in the morning, and the other one has an in-service day and a workday, in-service day in the morning and a workday in the afternoon. So, the concept was, why don't we take that last bit? And we kind of joked about it with our committee, is if I tell people that we're going to have an in-service day on the last day of school, I'm going to get shot. So, we laughed a little bit about it, but we're going to use it for collaboration time. So, it'll be a building day, and principals can use that to kind of wrap up things from that current school year, or they could use it to do some planning and collaboration to kick off their next school year. So, we had two choices there for staff. So, our recommendation from the committee is to recommend Draft B as the nineteen-twenty calendar. And it had one hundred eighty-six votes versus Draft A that had one hundred forty-two votes. So, I'm not asking for the board to take any action tonight, but this will be on the consent agenda for the twenty-first. Is that right? Next speaker, twenty-first.
And you said that that was a combination of both the parent and teacher vote, the number of votes?
No, this, the parents don't vote on, vote on this draft. This is just staff.
This is just teachers.
Yeah, so we did surveys. Yeah, so on the surveys, that first number, we had two hundred twenty-five responses from parents, and we had three hundred eighty-six responses for staff surveys.
And is the, is the, are the surveys the same?
No. They're different. There, there's not as much on the parent's survey as there is on the staff's survey. Other than that, the questions are the same. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm assuming on the staff's survey, it has the two drafts, right? Whereas the parent's survey asks just questions, or?
No. The survey in this case is just to gather information. It's just questions. Then we use all that information to begin to build drafts. And then, once we, so we probably went through seven drafts to get to the two that we ended up having. Then those go to a vote, and so then the voting results were?
The final ones.
Yes, and that's just two teachers for a vote.
Right. And that's pursuant to the negotiated agreement.
Yes, ma'am. So Draft B had one hundred eighty-six staff votes. Draft A had one hundred forty-two staff votes.
Right, thank you. How does the high school feel about basically losing a week in the first semester compared to the second semester?
So, we talked about that. But really, to get, the only way to balance that out is if you move past Christmas, and then you run into other kinds of issues. So, if you took, so we're four days short, I think, of first semester versus second semester. So if you go past Christmas time, then you start talking about how's that impacting our kids who take college classes, dual-credit classes, those kinds of things. We teach a lot of the dual-credit in the high school itself, so it becomes a little bit of an issue. So, there's high school representatives on there. I'm sure they'd like it to be more aligned, but they're certainly okay with this. Other questions?
I've got one, Mr. Hogan. The vote is, is a little closer than I would have expected it. Is there a particular item that seemed to be the driver of that, or is it just a collage?
It's just a vote. So, there's not feedback.
There's no feedback, okay.
From the vote.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I don't know what, what the tipping point is for one versus the other.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. You bet. With that, most notable presentation. I think we're going on to board open discussion. So, with that, I know Laura really wants to start.
Sure.
Thank you, Laura.
I think the only thing that I really have is March eighteenth is, or is it the eighteenth? I'd have to look at the calendar. But the Saturday that ends spring break is the sixteenth, is the legislative coffee at St. Cat's. So, if you're in town, I always miss this one, so please consider stopping by.
The last one was heavily attended, voted by legislators and by folks. Thank you for that reminder. Jean?
Okay. Kayden?
I would like to know where we got this book.
Just here.
Thank you.
Be mindful, live in the moment.
This is a great week, so if you have a book.
Thank you.
Thank you. And a card to help. Mark the place if you, after you've started.
I like it. How'd you come up with this book?
We have a book person, Chris Carr, and she was at Ardeno, Ardeno, in Pika this past weekend.
I do not have any.
Okay. So, really, this could come into play in negotiations maybe. Okay, thank you.
I'll just share that the middle schools went to music contests in Dodge City on Friday, and good success. I appreciate the time that our music teachers put into that because they, the band and choirs were there. Did eighth-grade orchestra go or not go at all? No. No, not at all, okay. That wasn't for sure. But I know the large groups got one ratings, and they had some of the solos that went, so, thank you for that.
And they're not small groups either, and so, that's a testament to.
Yes, and I would like to think transportation, because I'm not sure how many buses made trips to Dodge City over the past weekend, but just at the middle school level, there was a lot going back and forth, so I'm glad they can coordinate that.
Good comments, Jennifer. Thank you. Dr. Haggy?
I'd like to bring the discussion back to something we've discussed a few other times, and that's a kind of a climate survey of our district. We've had the discussions, and I'd like to know, I guess specifically from the other board members, if there's interest in this, or if this is something that we should, this discussion is something that we should put behind us. My vision for it would be that we would actually form type, some type of committee, because I think we all recognize that surveys can be misleading, they need a lot of thought and consideration. If we're going to put one together to make sure that we come up with the information that we're looking for. And I think the number one thing that the committee needs to address would be the goal of this. Because we've, as we've discussed, I think we envision different things that we might try to achieve with the survey. For me, the purpose of it is several. I would like to be sure on my own level that the board goals that we choose for our district align with the needs of the district, and that our board goals also align with the goals of all the participants in our district. And it's hard for me to know for sure that what my personal goals might be for the district are not perhaps clear out in left field. And I think a survey would help me to get that information. I also think that a survey would give the community, the staff, the students, they'd give those that are, that are invested in our district an avenue that they could provide feedback to the board. They could perhaps comment on the effectiveness of the board. It's always hard to hear others' comments on your performance, but I think if you don't ask the community, we can't know whether or not we're performing to the expectations of the community. But I really would like to give those who pour their heart and soul into this district an avenue to communicate back to us what they think our priorities should be, what they think is working well, maybe some feedback about what they might think is not working as well. I'd be interested to see if there's anything that we can identify that might be contributing to any turnover we might have with the teachers. I mean, we all assume that it's a pay issue, but if you take any management classes, usually they'll try to help you understand that when you manage, pay is quite often third or fourth on someone's list. And I, I certainly can't imagine that all the talent that we saw tonight is, is investing their heart and souls into such great programs for the pay. Or at least, it would be hard to imagine getting paid what they get paid.
The difference is different types of compensation.
There are different types of compensation, and of course, I don't think any of us would disagree that we would like very hard to see an increase in pay for these teachers. But they're clearly motivated by more than pay. You see their passion, you see their dedication. And I'd like to know if there's anything else that we could be doing to support them when we so often are constrained by the state with regard to what we pay them. I'd also like to, well, actually, the final thought I have is that I, I really envision this committee, if it were to occur, as a real deliberative, careful committee that works hard to look at different ways that surveys are conducted, how we might encourage people to participate in it, if we're going to put the time and the effort and the resources into it, look at ways to make sure that people feel free to express themselves without worrying about whether or not there's repercussions. So I don't imagine in my own mind that if we were to conduct a survey like this, that it would occur, you know, in the next few months, or perhaps not even in the next year. But I would like to know whether or not there's any interest in this with the rest of the board member. We talked about it multiple times, and for me personally, I'd either like to move on, or I'd like to know that there's some agreement that a survey like this is something that we would want to pursue. To that end, I think that as a, as an opportunity to think about it and to, you know, kind of mull it over, I think you can anticipate that if it were not an action item on our next agenda meeting, I'm actually going to be looking for a meeting where everyone's here, including Tim, so that we all have the opportunity to think about it. And you can anticipate that I might at some point make a motion, so that we can just quite simply vote, see if the support is there. If it's not, we If it's not, we speak as one Board. And if there's no interest in it, then again, I support this Board, whatever decision they might make. We will, I shall move on.
Okay. Well, I want to speak to that if you're...
Yes.
But I want to get to Dr. Carlin here first, and then I get the last word.
Have the last word.
Okay, thank you. You know, first of all, I want to thank all the Board, because a hundred percent of the Board attended the retreat last week, the training session. And it was lively from the standpoint of information, but even more so in open discussion. And I was a little disappointed, I mean, time, you know, there's never enough time, particularly if you like the folks and you like the discussion. But we had set ourselves a time to conclude, and we did. The training, actually, we didn't get hardly halfway through the slides that our trainer had provided. I did get the rest of those, and I take it that hasn't been sent to the rest of the Board. I want to send that to you because I think they're valuable. The initial training we got, I think, was just a good sort of springboard for the open discussion that we had. And some of that open discussion was directly related to the survey concept. I personally would love to have, I mean, don't throw anything at me, another one of those retreats, just to try to continue some of that, not only some of the training, but some of the discussion that we got out of it. And, you know, there was some suggestions for discussion prior to that meeting, and we just didn't get to it because of the time. I'm open to having another retreat. But, I mean, it was just good communicating, I thought that occurred. We concluded that meeting with sort of a notion to, in my words, ruminate on, you know, good discussion, and even a little bit of action from Dr. Carlin to pull together a couple of things. I think there was, for instance, a climate survey that Kansas Association of School Boards provides, and probably for a fee, and so there was some information to be gathered on that. And so I think there's certainly a basis for spending a little more time. I know we're all short on time. We have to schedule it, try to find that time when we can all attend. But that's a thought of mine. Otherwise, I feel like we've got some really good communicating that we're not done with yet. But I'm open to suggestions on that. I would think that would be a way to maybe develop Dr. Hannigan's suggestion a little bit. But again, you look at the calendar, we get short on time really fast here. I, maybe it's just a free meal, I mean, I like sandwiches, I don't know. But that would be a thought. And maybe if it's too much, if that chunk of time is too much, maybe we cut it down to two hours, and we just be a little more intentional. We did not have an agenda because we had training. But because of that, we didn't get to some of the items that had been brought up about, some of us have expressed we'd like to talk about. And so it's just a suggestion of mine that maybe we think about another retreat time. But I want to solicit your feedback on that, so that we can decide whether to invest in that or not. What I really appreciated about that, not only the Board being a hundred percent in attendance, but a hundred percent by the staff as well. And I just thought that was a productive environment to have, not only training, but a little discussion about what the training means. And then moving forward as a body, as a Board. So that's my item. I can go into other stuff, the Legislature and stuff like that, but we'll continue to think about and see what's on the horizon there. Some favorable reports out of the Legislature, I think, on funding. For us as a Body and working together, I would hate to see a motion and then a failure for lack of a second, or a second and then a failure on a vote on something that maybe we could develop a little bit more before we get to just putting something out on the table. I'm not discouraging motions. Let's have them as a Board so that we can function as a Board. But my thought is maybe we think in terms of another training retreat. And so if you have some response to that, please let me know. We're all busy. We'll have to get on it if we're going to find the time. Otherwise, we're left with information from Dr. Carlin on so-you-may-know, and that only goes so far, as far as us discussing our working relationship with each other. So that's my suggestion. Let me know, or Dr. Carlin will, and we'll keep going forward. It was so good, I thought, as far as investment of time. And yet it was, we came up short on some hopes for that time, as far as items to discuss. So we are continuing. The pay is good, as far as working relationship with each other. With that said, any other, I mean, just to sort of wrap up, comments from, I would say, staff or Board regarding the retreat, the training session? Anything to say?
I'd just echo your, I mean, I know it's an investment in time, and I think in the long run, I hope you'll find that it's a worthwhile use of your time, because I think evidence is pretty clear of how important that Board culture really is. It's, Jean, you know, made a great observation about the quality of Boards that Garden City has enjoyed for many years, and that I truly attribute to the investment that people make in being good Board members. And that's not easy to do. And so I appreciate those investments. Everybody has lots of demands on their time, so thank you.
Well, I think we even might have raised the question about whether staff can raise their hand and supplement some of our discussions if we have to, if we have the time. KJ, thank you for chiming in on the reading roadmap, because there is a budget item there. And when there's something exciting that appears to be working, it is a natural question, how much does it cost us? And how do we go in the future on that? We only have so much budget, and it's quite the process of budgeting, but also this Board, on how we spend the community's dollars to make a path for our youth to achieve and become responsible citizens with all of the education. We want to be mindful of that. And I guess, everything I can tell, we're on a tight budget, even looking into the future with what we hope to accomplish. Not the least of which is appreciating, adequately appreciating our teachers. So we'll keep working on that. With that, I don't want to draw out the meeting here, but I do want feedback. And so, Dr. Carlin, I appreciate your comments as well. We've got the next Board meeting scheduled for March twenty-first, Thursday at 5:00 PM. That's one of the shortened ones. And that will be here. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Select.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, raise your left hand. All opposed, same side.